We will have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It is October 2nd, it is 10:03, all three county commissioners here, and the meeting is now called to order. First set of business is consents and approvals. Good morning, welcome back.
Good morning, thank you. We have no exonerations. Vouchers for General County Fund, 303-735-17.
Just one second, there is an echo again, so if you can work that. They needed to know if there was an echo. Okay, go ahead.
Cole Severance, 8,009-8621, 911-2020865. Chestnut Ridge Park, 320. Camp Muffley, 8,007-8829. Recreation Levy, 567-40. Assessor's Valuation, 4,063332. Teen Court, 15,26494. Purchasing Card vouchers, General County Fund, 24,16946. Magistrate Court, 2723, 911-14960. Home Confinement, 6,77477. Chestnut Ridge Park, 34579. Assessor's Valuation, 43938. For a voucher total of $376,410.21. We have physician vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Montague County Planning Commission, Montague County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and Abandoned Dilapidated Enforcement Agency. Fiduciary orders for October 2nd, 2019. And then we have a couple other items.
Move for approval, second.
Poppin' move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we have three different situations on the fiduciary. So let's start with the first one.
Itemized statement of services for fiduciary Commissioner George Armstead.
Okay.
So, go ahead and do that one.
Move for approval, second.
Poppin' move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, okay. As you can see, we have a number of people here. Under the agenda, we have a hearing for administrative closure of estates. And since this is the first time we are doing this, we've asked the Honorable Carrie Blain to explain the situation before we open it up, so.
Hi. The estates that are before the commission today to be administratively closed are pursuant to a legislative law that was passed in 2019 that authorized the county commission to administratively close any estates that had not had any activity within three years of the time the administrator or executor had taken their oath of appointment. So there are, originally were 230 estates that our office took a look just back to 2015, which was the first time period that complied with the law. And there were 230 estates that met the qualifications to be administratively closed. As of today, there have been 32, I believe, estates that has made contact with the county to request that that estate be remained open or they have taken the steps to file the necessary paperwork. So the 198 estates that are on the order today to be administratively closed have been, all of the parties to each of those estates have been notified by first-class mail on two separate occasions. It has been published in the newspaper of the Dominion Post and is properly before the county commission this morning. So, once the hearing is open, anyone who is present for any of the estates can appear, make their objection known to the county commission, and then it's the county commission's decision whether to grant your objection and have that estate removed from the administrative closure today. If the estate is removed and the commission grants that objection, that estate will remain open and it is still incumbent upon the parties in that estate to complete the steps necessary to get that estate closed. If they do nothing from today, it will appear on the next administrative closing, which will happen in January. So, that's the Cliff Notes version.
Thank you very much. So what we're gonna do at this time is we'll open up the hearing for administrative closure of estates. If any individual would like to speak on a specific closure or estate, come up, state your name, your address, and the name of the actual estate. And then we will, we will hear you for three minutes.
I don't know if the microphone is on, but.
Yes, it is.
I am Daniel F. Mansburger, the third child of the estate of Ruby H. Mansburger. My objections to closing the estate is that the administrator has failed to file any distribution reports, income reports, copies of tax returns from the day that he became administrative. If you keep the estate open, maybe contact by an attorney to him may result in him filing the necessary reports on income, distribution, sale of assets. I hope that the commission will grant me that this estate remains open. Now, I have a bunch of documents, if you need documents.
Not at this time. All we're asking, all you're asking for is to remain open.
Remain open.
Okay. We're not gonna make any decision till after everyone speaks.
Oh.
Okay. If you want to sit down and wait, yes. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this particular issue? This particular estate? It's the only one we're gonna deal with right now. Okay, seeing none, wanna move to the next one and the next estate. Okay. Is there another estate that someone would like to speak on? Really? You're doing public now. Okay. Seeing none, we will close that part of the hearing. And what would the commission like to do on this particular situation? Mr. Mansburgers.
I move that we, that we move to close the estates as listed by the clerk with the exception of the Ruby Mansburger estate. But I do want to put the caveat in that it will show back up on January. So if we do nothing, if we, Carrie, this is a question outside my motion. I'll come back to my motion in a second. But if we do nothing outside, just motion that it be removed, it goes right back in the list in January, if nothing happens.
Correct. What my suggestion to Mr. Mansburger would be, if you, if the administrator in that particular estate has not filed anything since the inception of the estate, then one of the beneficiaries, yourself or whomever, should file a petition to remove that administrator for not complying with their duties. And then you can get some movement and some action on it. If you do nothing from the time that you leave this hearing today, that estate will simply stay in the same status it is right now and it will appear again in January to be administratively closed. So there are avenues available to you that you can use to try to move this estate along.
Thanks. That's what it sounded like, he just needed some advice to get it moving. So I'll restate my motion that we close the list as provided by the county clerk with the exception of the Ruby H. Mansburger estate. Second.
Poppin' move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Do we have any other fiduciary, Renetta? Or is that? Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
For the administrative closure part.
Yes.
Administrative closure part.
And sir, like, as recommended by the county clerk, I'd recommend that you get with her staff and she can tell you what needs to be done to file that petition and at least keep it moving.
Yes, and expedite it, okay. Is there anything else you're giving a look of?
I'm sorry, but the paperwork that you handed me.
No, that was gonna be for the comments in the public.
So we're done with?
Okay.
That will be the comments of the public.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Sheriff Perry Palmer, come on down. We have Madison Atkins and Sean Cahill. Welcome. I'll say that since she's on. That's a good idea.
May I say, sir?
Renetta?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Come over on this side so they can see you, so they can look you up and down. We have, first of all, Madison Atkins, who has started her employment on October 1st as a full-time court security officer with full benefits, starting salary of $2,493.04. Beside her is Sean Cahill, who started October 1st downstairs at our Process Transport, full benefits at $2,557.20 per month.
And Sheriff, just to confirm, these are filling positions that are currently budgeted?
Correct. They are correct, that is correct.
Move to approve? Second.
Poppin' move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Glad to have you. So you don't have to give us.
Hope you're not too busy, that's what I was saying. Is there any other introductions of any new employees or personnel changes? Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna go to comments from the public. At this time, we will have you state your name. You will have four minutes to explain where you live and explain your situation. And I'm gonna open the meeting and since, Delene, you came here early, signed up, you may go first.
Thank you, Commissioner Bloom, Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Sikora. My name is Delene Berry. I am not currently working for a news organization, but I have been an investigative reporter since 1988. You may know me from my work on the Skyler Nice case. I am an executrix for an estate located here in Montangalia County. This position is not to be taken lightly, nor do I. When it comes to fiduciary laws, West Virginia Code, Section 44-1-3 requires me to faithfully perform the duties of this office to the best of my skill and judgment. That is all I am trying to do. That's all I have been trying to do since you appointed me, May 18th, 2017. Because you appointed me and entrusted me with a duty that state and federal laws say is the highest standard of duty implied by law. That is what the courts have ruled across this country. I'm coming to you for your help because, quite honestly, I do not know what else to do. On September 24th, in the matter of Culp versus Wolf, Civil Action 18-C-51, Judge Susan Tucker chose to confirm an arbitration award that was based on fraud. Forensic accounting evidence conclusively proved that fraud led to the award, but Judge Tucker chose to ignore that evidence. It appeared to me in court that day that she had not even looked at it. Then she ordered me to become a co-conspirator to that fraud. If I refuse to do as she ordered by October the 9th at noon, she will hold me in contempt. Because Judge Tucker has, throughout these proceedings, shown a pattern of abuse of the judicial process, I am filing a motion today when I leave here for her to be disqualified. I am doing this because judges take and uphold the law too. They are not above the law. This judge chose to go against what state and federal laws say is illegal and unethical. You cannot uphold an arbitration award that is based on fraud. When it comes to fraud in the courts, a precedent of the US Supreme Court, the Supreme Court of Hawaii, excuse me, in the case of Kawa Mata Farms versus United Agri Products, it's very similar to what has transpired in Culp versus Wolf. The Supreme Court in Hawaii ruled that DuPont committed discovery fraud upon the Circuit Court and the other parties. Fraud upon the court is a wrong against the institution set up to protect and safeguard the public, institutions in which fraud cannot complacently be tolerated consistently with the good order of society. Now, Judge Tucker is not only helping Wolf steal a dead man's estate and a widow's home, she is also ordering that widow, me, to break the law. On September 24th, after confirming the arbitration award, she ordered me to sign three documents, turning the entire estate over to the thieves who stole the money from my late husband's storage company and then used it for their personal gain. As executrix of that estate, I have a fiduciary duty to protect its assets. So the creditors get paid and so his three minor grandchildren, who are also heirs, get what their grandfather left for them. Also, the creditors include West Virginia Hospitals, Clear Mountain Bank, and Morgan Funeral Home, among others. If I sign those documents, I will become a conspirator in the fraud. I cannot ethically and good conscience do that, nor can I do it legally, because it will violate my fiduciary duty and the oath I took, which you bestowed upon me when you granted me the fiduciary duty. That duty led me to hire, in August, an independent forensic accountant, who then found evidence, right here, it's one of 11 pages of her report, which proves that instead of Culp owing Wolf $1,300, as the arbitrator found, Wolf owes Culp at least $1.3 million. This is due to the financial misappropriations of company assets. That includes $600,000 in checks written from the storage company's bank account, which someone signed my husband's name to and then paid expenses that had nothing to do with our storage company. I have written evidence from my husband where he specifically prohibited anyone to sign his name to those checks, but they did it anyway. Among the financial misappropriations in particular is one check from the storage company account after my husband died for more than $8,000. That check was used to pay one of the three defense attorneys Wolf hired to fight this lawsuit while I continue fighting to save the estate without any money at all to hire an attorney. What that attorney did is no different than an attorney who accepts cash from a drug dealer who earned that money by selling drugs. When I submitted a copy of that check to Judge Tucker, showing that the attorneys are complicit in this crime, she ignored it and then ordered that same attorney to write the order that confirms the arbitration award, the order that will compel me to violate my fiduciary duty.
Okay, could you kind of?
Sum it up?
Yes, that would be great.
I'm going to jail.
Cause I'm not sure what, yes.
I'm going to jail on October 9th, because I cannot violate my fiduciary duty and I need somebody to step up and help me out here, because I've been fighting this for two years and it boggles my mind, as an investigative reporter, that a sitting judge can not only endorse what's happening, she's a part of it.
Okay, well, we're not allowed to respond.
I know.
But I appreciate, thank you for coming in.
And thank you for hearing me out. And if you have any recommendations, since I'm authorized to file a report with you when this is all over, I would really appreciate hearing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Giuliani. I live at 256 Prairie Avenue in Morgantown, West Virginia. I'd like to address a couple topics this morning. One first would be fire departments and volunteer fire departments, professional fire departments, combination of those things. We passed a levy at the last election that requires me as a city resident, who owns no property in the county, to pay additional property taxes that went to this levy. Now, that being said, I saw some discussion on social media yesterday talking about how different people in the state can do things. So what I would suggest that we do is not hold our hands or tie our hands, but what we wanna do is look out and how we can do this best. We talk about metro government. What would be the simplest form of metro government? We have all these volunteer fire departments within our community. Why don't we bring them under one heading that we can have a professional that can help with these folks to understand, to do the best job they can? I understand there's some situations about lack of volunteer fire purposes. Well, that being said, those all issues need to be addressed with some professionalism. That comes from the county. That being said, I wanna move on to the second topic. Morgantown is the county seat of Montangalia. Montangalia County is the largest stakeholder within this downtown of Morgantown. It's very important to note, you are the largest stakeholders within the city of Morgantown. You have the Justice Building, you have the Courthouse, you have the magistrate building. I think I'm forgetting one, but.
Sheriff. The sheriff.
Sheriffs and the jail that's sitting there idling things. So what my thing is, is this. We're living with a situation that is upon all of us in our downtown. To place blame on this person, to place blame on that person, it really doesn't make any difference, does it? It really, what we call people, it doesn't really make any difference. The point of it is, is we're all here together and you're a large stakeholder. So what I'd like you to do, if you can't work with the city of Morgantown, which nobody seems to be able to, that you go to the other stakeholders within the city of Morgantown, Main Street, the other organizations. But what I want us to take was one step further, is that what we need is that we have West Virginia University here and we have West Virginia Medicine. Very important. Why? Because they are part of the wellness in our community. They stepped forward, they're part of the Aquatics Center and the Track Center. When we say there's been no money, public money invested into that facility, that's ridiculous. WVU and W Medicine's put millions and millions of dollars into that building. That's public money. Maybe the county hasn't put in any public money, maybe they have, depending on how you look at it. But that's okay, because it's a great facility and it's gonna be a wonderful thing for our community. I hope, for our community, I hope. Okay? That being said, why don't we use the same resources? West Virginia University Medicine. All the resources of our mental health providers, all the things that they have to offer us, okay? To come and contribute within our downtown. If we can put a wellness center out at Mylan Park, certainly we can put a wellness center within our downtown. With that being said, there's been some thought, it's been brought forth, it was bought, the Ramada Inn. How many months are we in? Months. Nobody's done anything. So that being said, maybe that building isn't viable. Maybe the property is wonderful, but because of the configuration, because of the problems that the building exists, why do you think it's sold for $1.5 million? It obviously had problems, okay? But it sits on 10 acres, in a great location. So that being said, you're not gonna move your services out of downtown. It just can't happen, because the services are needed. But you can supplement the services, you can make it all work together to put the facilities we need in the detention centers, et cetera, et cetera, within our community. That's what we need to do, Commissioners. I thank you for this time and I appreciate all your efforts and I hope that we can bring these efforts forward to all work together to bring what we need to. I just wanna end it with this. We do have the land-grant university, West Virginia University, within our town. Okay? But what we also have, and we promote ourselves as this somehow wonderful community, this and that. Without a downtown, you have nothing. You have nothing. Honestly, you have nothing and you all are seeing that. Okay? So we have to bring this forward. We have one street, really. We have one street, High Street. We're not like Huntington or Charleston or Willing to deal with the problem. We have one street. One street. Let's work our way out of it, let's get a game plan, let's see how we can do things and let's all work together to see what we can do to make our city, Morgantown, and our county, Montangalia, the best county in the state that we promote ourselves as being. Let's do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your insight, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning.
Heard you on the radio yesterday.
Yes. For good or for ill, right? Thank you very much, Andrew Gaspar, Director of Planning for Montangalia County. I just wanted to remind everyone that with the rollout of the subdivision ordinance, we have a series of public meetings to help present this to the public. We have one tonight at Cheat Lake Elementary at 6:30 in the cafeteria. We have another on the 7th, October 7th, at Clay Batell High School Auditorium, also at 6:30. And one on October 14th at University High Auditorium. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And there's a brief presentation and a Q and A after. Thank you very much.
Thank you for publishing this. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, Commissioner. I work with RDVIC and to kick off Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we are holding a fundraising event at Panera Bread from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. If you bring this flyer in or show an electronic version, which I can provide for y'all, a portion of the, oh, what do I wanna say? A portion of the proceeds will go towards our agency and which will be able to provide us with the ability to expand our community and help more people.
Okay, great. Could I have your address and also what's the date of that?
Okay. It's, the date is tonight.
Oh, tonight, okay.
Yes.
What was the times?
Between 4:00 and 8:00.
Okay.
And then I also have.
And your name and address, again, I apologize.
Amaya Williams. Do I get the PO box? And then PO Box 4228, Morgantown, West Virginia.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
And we're gonna have you up in a second. Okay, I will now close the public portion and we will have you back up, because we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And if you could state your name again and feel free, if you all wanna stand up. I think it'd be important.
My name's Becca Frame. I work at RDVIC and am the civil legal advocate there. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center, serving Montangalia, Preston, and Taylor Counties, as well as all other domestic violence programs, the Montangalia County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of October to be National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic violence accountable for their actions against individual victims and society as a whole.
Move for approval, second.
Poppin' move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And if you just state your name, we have her name, if you wanna just state who you are.
Mr. President, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. My name is Brian McAllister. I am a member of the board at RDVIC. And if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Very quickly. I appreciate your willingness to allow us to appear this morning. Secondarily, I'd like to applaud the efforts of our staff who fight this battle on a daily basis and make a real difference in this community, as well as the communities in Preston and Taylor Counties. And I'd like to invite each and every member of our community to join the fight with us. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You do a much-needed service, unfortunately, in that community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we need to sign them?
Yeah, they've, she's got the proclamation, you guys can sign. Are you gonna stay, are you leaving?
Okay. We need to sign it then. And then we'll make copies.
Would the commission be interested in some of the flyers that we have for tonight's event?
Yes. And I was gonna ask, is it downtown or both, or which one?
The Willie Street one.
Okay, the downtown one. Okay. Yes, fine. We're very informal.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again. Thank you. Thank you. We now will have grants, Ms. Colleen Coon, how you doing today?
I'm good, how are you?
Fine. Good.
I have for you this morning a grant contract for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. We were awarded $118,750 for that. So that will need your approval. And then I also have the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Grant application.
Yes.
We're requesting $52,000 for a total of $108,000, and that was including the match.
Right.
I have the resolution for that and it says, "The County Commission of Montangalia County meant on October 2nd, 2019, with a quorum present and passed the following resolution. Be it resolved that the County Commission hereby authorizes Thomas C. Bloom, President of the Montangalia County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority to receive and administer funds pursuant to provisions of the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Fund Program." So like I said, there's the contract for that to sign. And you guys also need to sign a letter of support saying that you support, we are requesting funds to make the first and third floor bathrooms 88 compliant.
Okay.
Saying that you guys support that. And that's all I have for that. And then if you will recall, last week, we signed for the community. And then if you will recall, last week, we signed for the Community Corrections Grant, the quarterly payments. I received notice that we can submit requests for funds for all the quarterly payments in advance, so as a, instead of coming every month for you to sign that, we will no longer have to do that. We still have to submit those reports.
Right.
But you can go ahead and sign every quarter, and I can submit that to them. That way, we won't have to go ahead and do that.
Great.
Move for approval, second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And then also, as a reminder, the Records Management and Precipitation Board Grant is going to be due on November 1st. If anybody would like to submit an application, just let me know and we can work on that together.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
No, sir.
Really? Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
Nope.
Just a little bit. New business, to consider request by Swanton Menonite Fellowship Church for use of the Courthouse Square.
This is, I guess they're just going to be having more or less a service.
Okay.
On the Courthouse Square. On October 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, but they did state that if there's rain, they would either move it to the 15th or the 17th.
Right.
So I guess 15th, 16th, and 17th.
15th through the 17th.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other new business?
Nope.
Great. Looking for reports from elected officials? Any? I do want to thank Carrie enormously for helping us through that, this situation.
Yes.
Thank you. Sean, you go first.
Okay. Since last week, last Thursday, I had our Mont County Health Department Board of Health meeting, and the, I went to the Farm Bureau dinner that night. I was booked to go to the Fairmont State game, and I apologize, I didn't make that. I guess I missed a double overtime.
Double overtime, that's great.
But I will reach out to President Mier to, I believe I'll be at a future game, because Wesleyan plays at Fairmont. My daughter plays in a band at Wesleyan, so I'll probably attend that game, but I saw her on Sunday, and I apologize for not being able to make it. Friday, I went to the Buckwheat Festival for the, the area schools had their parade, and it's my annual, that's the only time I go to Buckwheat Festivals, on Friday of every year, so I got to experience that. Monday, we had a Development Authority Executive Committee meeting. Yesterday, we had our extension building meeting, and last night, I went to the South Stampede, that's a cross-country meet in, in South Park. Today, regular business. Tomorrow, I have my, I believe I have a MAP Executive Committee meeting. Friday, we have our Open Gov Auditor's presentation and an extension building walkthrough. The group had left, but I wanted to point out to them, with us signing the resolution for the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center, that today's the actual International Day of Nonviolence, because it's marked every year by Mahatma Gandhi's birthday, so it's kind of fitting that we also signed that resolution today. I do want to thank you, Carrie, for your, your guidance through this. Again, this is a new process, it's going to have some wrinkles, it's going to have some warts, but I, we've got the best clerk in the state to actually shepherd us through that, so I really appreciate it. In regards to ma'am, in regards to your case, I do listen and I do, I am sympathetic. I'm not really sure what standing this, this commission has to intervene in an active case, but I would ask that if our fiduciary commissioner could provide any, or our lawyer can provide any assistance, then I'd be more than willing to at least offer that up, but I know we have no standing to intervene in this case, I would, I would assume. You know, in the regular court process, however, that, you know, I wish you luck in that, because I do, I am sympathetic to your costs. So, anything we can help that's actually within our power, we certainly like to help, but you know, we don't make it a habit of jumping in the middle of active court cases. And one other thing I wanted to say, and I can't remember, but, oh, I do want to thank Bobby Doyle, though we're not in there yet, you guys may have noticed, we're, in past couple of months, we've been a little bit more besheveled than usual up here, because this has been our office, that and in the back conference room. But we just got our furniture installed, and we're weeks, maybe a week, to allow all the wrinkles be ironed out in our back offices, and it's a thing of beauty, and Bobby, you and your team have done a great job. But the thing I noticed, that's consistent with everything we do as a commission, when you walk, when you walk in the halls, you look, there's a glass door where you can see in, and all of our offices have glass doors. There's nothing that's done behind closed doors. Even if the door's closed, it's still completely transparent from the county perspective. And when I walked in my office today, that kind of hit me that, you know, this is the way we do our business, and it's the way our office should be. So, again, thank you, Bobby, for everything you've done. That's all I have.
Thank you. I don't want to state it, but that's also a good reason for any active shooters can be seen by a glass door.
He's got three windows.
Okay. So I have three windows, yes. As Sean stated last Thursday, we did attend the Farm Bureau banquet, celebrating 100 years of the existence of the Farm Bureau. Today, I will be attending the PACE. They have an annual celebration of their award ceremony, so I'll be going over there this afternoon. Friday, we do have the Open Gov meeting to host our state auditor, J.B. McCuskey. I've also taken the liberty to invite the local Fireman's Association's officers to please attend this, because they are going to be subject to an audit that heretofore they have not been required to do. Friday afternoon, as Sean stated, we have a walkthrough of the new 4-H and Extension Center, and next Tuesday is our weekly meeting on that. And I'll be then, in the evening, attending an open house at the Mills Group. I believe there's going to be an Art Gallery preview there. So, I did attend a wedding, so I was gone from Friday through last night at midnight, so my, my affairs of meetings were a little bit short this week. With regard to this state, I also took the liberty to invite our fiduciary commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. George Harmsstead. He's present in the audience, he has listened, so perhaps there might be some enlightenment that he may be able to be shed. I know that we're not, we're not, we're not charging him with, with this case, because obviously it is in Circuit Court, but perhaps there might be an opinion that he might be able to render, or perhaps some assistance. We'll see about that.
Did you want, okay. If you'd like. I'll suspend the rule, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure. Go ahead.
As far as the fiduciary commissioner, commissioners, I hear, I stand as a hearing officer for this commission on disputes within estates that have been filed and matured. This estate doesn't have an appraisal filed in it yet. It was opened in, it was assigned to me in March of 18, but the estate was, notice of creditors ran in November of 17. There's no appraisal, there's no claims in front of me, I have no jurisdiction to do anything under the law. I'm not your attorney, but I think it's clear that my report was that she was going to go to arbitration and find out what happened after that. She lost arbitration, you lost it arbitration?
Correct.
Right. And so she went to court, and now she's under order by the court to do something by a certain date, correct? I don't know if this commission has any jurisdiction to do anything about that. She's got her rights that she has to pursue, unless the commission, I don't think it does, wants to get involved in something that's not within their jurisdiction. I don't think there's anything the commission can do, but that's not my, that's not my opinion as your counsel, but just a, just an old country lawyer.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anything else?
I, I also would like to, and I came back from my vacation, or from my wedding, and walked into my new office. Wow. It is, it is really a step up, if you will, from what I was first presented with, when I first took office in, in 2015. So, thank you very much for all the work you do. Also, it's, thank you, Carrie, because I know that these estates are not easy. I received actually a call from a friend of mine in another county. So, I know this process is also going on in Preston County, and I assume other counties throughout our fair state, so that's it.
Okay. Thank you. This was a very eventful week for me, for volunteering. First, going to Fairmont State, and I want to say that I'm thrilled with that, with Dr. Martin, is it? She was very ecstatic that we represented Mont County to come over, and wants to keep a positive relationship, so I think that's a really open door for us. I worked Meals on Wheels, MASAP, the WV alumni band had their first professional gig, I'm really proud about. And just continually representing the County Commission at numerous events. I am thrilled that this Friday, we will be offering the Open Gov program, and we are hoping that, we do know that the company is looking for a regional office on the East Coast, so we're going to put in our bid, since they did come, and they're willing to stay, and they're going to go to the, we have them going to the football game and a tailgate. So, we're doing everything we can to try and bring in new jobs and represent the County Commission. And I do want to say, a lot of this had to do with Sean Score, who got really involved with this Open Gov, when talking with J.B. McCuskey, and it's really blossomed for this entire state. And we're not only talking about county commissions, city councils, volunteer fire departments, possibly, but now school systems within a year. So this is an enormous program that I believe will benefit all of the county and the county citizens. I believe that is it. Again, Carrie, I want to thank you very much for getting us through this situation, and we'll continue to work with you on that, but we do appreciate it. With that, we will talk quietly afterwards, if you wanted to talk with Zomis. Again, I agree, there's not much that we can do as a county commission, but we will offer any services that we are allowed to do.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Poppy moves in second, we be gone. Thank you.